Guyardo joining us soon. We're going to go ahead and start the meeting like we always do with the invocation and the pledge. Today, we're going to have the invocation and the pledge from Meg Blankenship, Human Resource Manager. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for all the blessings we have received. As we gather here, let us be grateful for our chairman and our supervisors who have willingly and with a sense of purpose committed themselves to serve the citizens of Maricopa County. In so many ways, they have dedicated their efforts to improve our communities and thus have changed the lives of many. Let us pray for their continued wisdom and leadership. For our citizens here today and those throughout the county, let us be thankful for their interest in participating in county government. May they feel listened to and supported by the decisions made on their behalf which are intended to help them live their lives safely, comfortably, and with a sense of pride in their communities. As we contemplate the future, filled with its promise and renewal, and through the continued leadership of our board, may we all be inspired to serve in whatever capacity we can. And last but certainly not least, let us reflect for a moment on those prayers and intentions which are most personal to us. Amen.
Amen.
Now if you will please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Deputy Clerk Deb Schaefer, if you'll please call the roll for us.
Would be happy to, Chairman. I understand that Supervisor Sellers is in Asia today, so he won't be joining us. Supervisor Hickman?
Here.
Supervisor Chukri?
Here.
On the phone. And Supervisor Guyardo, I understand, is on the way. Chairman Gates?
Here. Thank you very much. All right, so for many people, their favorite part of the Board of Supervisors meeting now, Jose Santiago is joining us again from Animal Care and Control with a friend. How are you this morning?
I am well, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Do we get an obligatory "ah" or?
Ah.
This little one right here is three-month-old Gia. She's falling asleep, if you can't tell. And we have her listed as a shepherd mix. And she likes the microphone. She is all ready to go, and she is at our west shelter. Her adoption fee is $300. We always like to remind folks that when you adopt a dog at that price point, you're saving the lives of seven other animals at the shelter because it is $41 a day to house and feed the animals at our shelter. And we just recently launched our newest program, Grown Pups for Grown Ups. So even though she does not qualify, we are encouraging a lot of folks to come out to the shelter and check out some of the senior dogs that we've got and give them a chance. A lot of people like the cuteness of the puppy, but a senior dog is a little bit more even-tempered, and sometimes they are house-trained. So we are hoping that with that new program, people will keep an eye on that. And I know there's another little special thing on our agenda today, so I'm going to make way for that as well.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you for joining. Now, what's the attire there that we're wearing today?
It actually says "Surfs Up Dog Beach."
Excellent. So with the chilly weather outside?
She is anticipating our summer.
There you go. It is coming. It is coming soon. Well, excellent. Well, thank you for joining us. And again, thank you for the great work that you guys do over at Animal Care and Control every day. So with that, we're actually going to take an item out of order. We're going to go ahead and take item 19, and I think Mary Martin was going to join us.
Good morning, Chairman Gates. Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for letting us be here this morning. That item that we're speaking about is a private donation from a person we are very, very, very honored to know. Her name is Kathy Rinaldi. Kathy has been an advocate for animals in Maricopa County for more than 20 years. She gives both of her volunteer time, but also her resources to prevent suffering in the community. And recently, up that game by donating the first of two large donations, the first amount of $45,000, the second to follow in the same amount, to provide services to the most underserved. We will be going into the community, going door-to-door, to make sure that people who live in resource deserts, who don't have access to the Internet and other places, understand about what is available to them and providing those things when they cannot afford them. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Kathy and the team she's brought with her. You'll see their shirts. Can I ask you guys to stand up? It's our new program, Pet Health. I would love it. Could you guys maybe do a photo of?
Absolutely, we'd love to do that.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, well, why don't we first, we'll go ahead and take action on the item, and then we'll take the photo. So if either of my, any of my colleagues have a comment or motion, we would certainly entertain that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and let me apologize for being tardy. Let me just say thank you for the work you all are doing. I think if you look at my particular district, there is so much need in services out there that the families could really welcome. You know, as pet owners, we love our animals, they're part of the families. But unfortunately, you have some families that just have a difficult time taking care of the basic needs. And when you have, or even providing information, letting families know where to go. So when you have great volunteers and workers out there that are doing great things, I appreciate it so much. And I know the families out there that are just looking to be pointed in the right direction would appreciate it as well. So thank you so much. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make the motion to move forward.
All right, thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
Concurring with the Supervisors' statements, that's very nice. Thank you guys all for being here and what you're doing for the community and for our pets. So we very much appreciate it. I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Again, I would echo the comments of both my colleagues. Thank you so much for what you're doing for the community and for our pets. It's greatly appreciated. And with that, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, and if you'd like to come on down, we'll get a photo.
[laughing] All right, well, that's a tough act to follow. But, you know, but we'll try with planning and zoning. Jen, if you could join us. If anybody can follow that up, it's you, Jen.
So we're now getting into the planning and zoning portion of our agenda, and thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I'd like the puppy to be here.
Yeah, exactly.
So you have one agenda item, and this agenda item is for a rezone for one parcel from five-acre zoning to one-acre zoning. This item was continued from the February agenda to allow the neighbors to work on a compromise. At this time, the Board may want to consider continuing this item again so the neighbors can continue to work together to achieve a resolution.
All right, well, I know this is in Supervisor Chukri's district. Did you have any thoughts on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank Jen as well. This has proven to be a bit of a difficult situation, and so I would move that we do take the recommendation of planning and development and delay this meeting for no time certain. We're going to work with both sides on this issue to try and come up with something that's fair and equitable. And so until we can do that, I think it's probably best that we just move this to a future date, and we'll come back and reestablish when that date will be.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you Supervisor Chukri. So we have a motion to continue on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion to continue and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Now, we're going to move into the special event licenses for, so this is 5C through J. West Valley Corral, Circle the City, Arizona Lutheran Academy, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, Sun City West Boomers Club, Mark Community Resources, HEPA, Tri-City Chapter 454, and Risen Savior Lutheran Church. Do we have any folks here to speak on these items?
Mr. Chairman, we have no speaker slips on those items.
All right, so I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 5C through 5J, or 5K, I'm sorry, is it K or J?
J.
Just J?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion to continue and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I thought that was a great follow-up to the fun with pets.
We can do a picture if you want.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so now we're going to move on to our statutory hearings. With the Clerk of the Board, we have the liquor license applications, A through B. It's the acquisition of control for Skyline Liquor and Jim Michaels Restaurant. Do we have any folks here to speak on either one of these items?
Mr. Chairman, we have no speaker slips today.
Okay, great, no speaker slips then. So I would entertain a motion with respect to items 5A and B.
Motion to approve items 5A and 5B, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now, we're going to move into the special event licenses for, so this is 5C through J. West Valley Corral, Circle the City, Arizona Lutheran Academy, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, Sun City West Boomers Club, Mark Community Resources, HEPA, Tri-City Chapter 454, and Risen Savior Lutheran Church. Do we have any folks here to speak on these items?
Mr. Chairman, we have no speaker slips on those items.
All right, so I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 5C through 5J, or 5K, I'm sorry, is it K or J?
J.
Just J?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Now we move on to 5K, and which is a new license for the Dollar General Store, 19554. Do we have any speaker slips on this item?
We have no speaker slips on this one.
All right, okay, well, then the Board will now consider item 5K.
Motion to approve item 5K, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
I beat him. Forgot you were there.
Yes, was that a second Supervisor Chukri?
It was, and I beat him. Don't let him fool you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, you got it. We just, we looked at the tape, we looked at the instant replay, and you did get it. So that's, thank you for that second. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Now, we have number, item six, which is the impact statement hearing for the proposed Gibraltar Estates Irrigation Water Delivery District. Do we have any speaker slips on this item?
No speaker slips, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, everybody's out enjoying the cool weather and the breezes out there. All right, any, at this time, the Board would consider item six.
Mr. Chairman, I move forward, item number six.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo for the motion. Do I have a second?
Okay, I'll make it.
That was your cue, Steve.
I heard it.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now, under transportation, we have 7A through G. We have road file declarations for the following road files, number 5933, 5923, 5934, A610, A607, A608, and A603. Do we have any speaker slips on these items?
I believe it's because Fran is not here today, but they're avoiding the meeting today, so no, sir, we do not have any.
All right, okay, well, I don't think that's it. I think people would love to have the opportunity to listen to you being clerk, so with that, the Board will consider items 5A through G. I'm sorry, 7A through G.
District two, motion. Okay, I think that was a motion. I'll second it.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Chukri for the motion, and thank you Supervisor Hickman for the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously as well. Now we move on to county officer items. We have clerk of court, eight appointments, under constables, nine and 10, grant funds from Constable Ethics Standards and Training Board. Under county attorney, number 11, we have official appointments and oaths of office. And under the sheriff, we have 12, which is request for review over baseline, and 13, which is the IGA with the City of Phoenix. The Board will now consider items 8 through 13.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 8 through 13.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second, but I have a quick question on item number 12, and I was wondering if the Sheriff's Department is here, if anybody's.
Thanks for being here, come on down.
Hi.
Hey.
Just a quick question on item number 12. You are seeking a request over review over baseline of a pretty heavy amount, and it lists retention bonuses.
Correct.
So my question is, is your feeling that this is going to help? Because I think we have a problem in the hiring process, and I know that we've been working on this. My question is, we look to be looking to spend, and I, by all means, I think our detention officers do a great job, and they keep our community safe, absolutely. But I have a, I think we're having to deal with hiring, and this is more on retention. Do you think, do you think that that is a subject matter that needs to be addressed this year in order to get more detention officers hired? Or is it a problem with their pay grades? Or what are your feelings on that?
It's both. So the equation is both sides. So we need to hire more detention officers, but to open up the ITR next year at the end of next fiscal year, we can't afford to lose the detention officers that we have now. And we have pretty high attrition rates, and we're hoping that this retention plan will stem that a little bit. So yes, we do need to work on our recruiting and hiring, but also on the other side, we just can't lose anybody. So we have this plan in place, we can fund this year, but this agenda item is requesting the Budget Office to review next year's part of the plan. And the idea is to continue to offer retention bonuses through the start of the ITR so that we can fully staff it and open it up the right way.
So those, so the projected retention bonuses would be paid prior or after the training of these new detention officers? Is that your plan?
It's throughout.
Throughout?
So it affects all current detention officers.
Okay.
So we would start paying retention bonuses late in this fiscal year, but it would continue through the end of 2020.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks for the question. So we have a motion, we have a motion, is that right? And a second? Okay, great. All right, and again, I'll just add, and not to beat a dead horse, but again, these, the requests for review over baseline continues to increase, and again, these are, we understand these are all important requests that all the departments are making, but again, we've got a historically high number of requests. So we'll be looking at all of these very, very closely as we move forward with this process. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next to the Treasurer's Office, we have 14, which is an offer on tax-deeded land parcel near Cooper Road and Pecos Road. And there are currently two offers for this parcel. So do we have a motion at this time?
Can you speak, anyone here?
There's no one here to make additional offers.
Okay, thank you.
I motion to approve offer number two, which is the higher value of $200. Mr. Chairman?
All right, we have that motion for offer number two, for $200, City of Chandler.
City of Chandler.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Next, we will move into adult probation. Item 15, that's to amend the lease agreement with Ashbourne Holdings LLC. Under Superior Court, number 16 and 17, to appoint judges pro tem. Air quality, item 18, which is a license agreement for air quality monitors at fire station number 31. Under Animal Care and Control, number 20 is donations from the Hope Emergency Animal Rescue here, thank you very much for that donation. And under Budget Office 21, accept reimbursement funds for health plan benefits. The Board will now consider these items.
Motion to approve items 15 through 21, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Excuse me.
Yes.
With exception of item number 19.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't say that? With the exception of item number 19.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Schaefer.
You're sitting in Chukri's chair. I'll second that motion to approve items 15 through 21 with the exception of 19.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, we're going to move on to correctional health. 22 is an MOU with Community Bridges, Inc. And 23 through 25 are pharmaceutical donations from Alkerme's, Inc., Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Otzaka America Farm, Inc. Under emergency management, 26 is revised emergency operations policy, A1305. And item 27 is grant funds from Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. The Board will now consider items 22 through 27.
Motion to approve.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to county departments, equipment services, 28, rescind the department tool allowance policy, A1516. Under finance, we have item 29, State of Arizona Open Book Service Agreement. And 30, funds transfers and warrants. And then under human resources, we have 31, which is expansion of the county's employee discount program. And 32, which is to amend premium pay rates. Board will now consider items 28 through 32.
Motion to approve items 28 through 32, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, if you may.
What's that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to also make the comment on item 32, to our Human Resource Department, especially Jan for her work on that, to make sure that these folks who keep our facilities up and running in the way that they do, that they're recognized for that. So I apologize for not speaking, but wanted to make sure that was noted.
Thank you very much, well said. Thank you Supervisor Chukri. So that motion did pass unanimously, and now we'll move on next to items 33 through 39. On items 33 through 35, we've got amend agreements and IGA with Tempe Community Action Agency, Newtown Community Development Corporation, and City of Chandler, City of Glendale. Under Parks and Recreation, we have 36 donations, 37 contract with Scorpion Bay Holdings LLC, and 38 is in agreement with the Arizona Game and Fish Commission. And Madam Clerk, we have a change on 39?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. The department has requested that this item be pulled for this meeting.
Okay, excellent, all right. So then that leaves us with items 33 through 38. Any comments or motions on those?
Motion to approve items 33 through 38 with a quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman.
Uh, RJ, I thought I saw, thank you for your hard work with item number 37, and seeing two, some government entities coming together to make boating a little bit safer out there, but also a little bit easier for the massive amounts of traffic that go on in the Maricopa County Lake Pleasant Park. Okay, just pointing that out to Peoria. Okay. So thank you for your work.
Thank you for those comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo. I would echo the comments that Supervisor Hickman made, and just been out speaking with a few groups lately, and I'm just very proud to be able to talk about the great work that Parks does with basically, you know, little to no impact on the general fund, and that's something that we should not take for granted. It's very significant, and thanks RJ to you and your team for all the great work you guys do. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. So now we move into public health. 40 is in agreement with Cancer Support Community Arizona. 41 and 42 amend contract and IGA with Banner Poison and Drug Information Center and Tuberculosis Control Program. 43 is in agreement with Aspen University. 44 and 45 are purchase order and IGA with the Arizona Department of Health Services. And 46 and 47 are public use data agreements with City of Phoenix Housing Department and the Chandler Housing Authority. Board will now consider items 40 through 47.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 40 through 47.
Thank you for that motion Supervisor Guyardo. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we move into real estate. 48 is to amend the lease agreement with Lurz Investors LLC. And under transportation, we have 49, which is a contract with WSP USA, Inc. 50 is annexation by the Town of Gilbert. 51 is road vacate for road file number AB321. And 52 is easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. Board will now consider items 48 through 52.
Move for approval, items 48 through 52, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Supervisor Guyardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Now we're getting into setting of hearings for, under Clerk of the Board, we have 53 is petitions to form the Hacienda Granada Irrigation Water Delivery District, and 54, which is petitions to form the Ventura Manor Irrigation Water Delivery District. Then under transportation, we have a number of road files, and we've got 5918, 5919, 5925, 5927, and 5931, all up in beautiful District Number Two. Do we have a motion?
I think that was a.
I'll second that.
That was a motion, yeah. And a second. Thank you for the motion Supervisor Chukri, thank you for the second. Supervisor Hickman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now we're moving to the consent agenda. 60, duplicate warrants. 51, RICO funds quarterly report. 62, property reclassification appeals for approval. 63, the civil penalty appeals. 64 is precinct commitment. 65 is tax abatements, and 66 is tax cases. The board will now consider items 60 through 66.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I go ahead and move approval of items 60 through 66.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the second, Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now, we're moving to the addendum, and we'll actually take A1 first from the treasurer, that is settlement with DWG Enterprises LLC. Do I have a motion on item A1?
Motion to approve item A1, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Hickman, for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously, and now I'm going to turn the gavel over to Vice Chairman.
The next item on our agenda is item A2, settlement, approval of USAA settlement. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item A2.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
That's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, and we will invite the chairman back. Like you were hardly even gone.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chairman. And now we will recess as a board of supervisors and reconvene as the flood control district board of directors, and we have one item, F1, easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. Board will now consider item F1.
Motion to approve item F1, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman, for that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we will adjourn as the flood control district board of directors, and we will reconvene as the board of supervisors. So do we have any public comment, folks here today for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, we have no speaker slips for public comment.
We do not, all right, it really is something about that weather out there, I guess. All right, so now we will open it up to comments from the board members and the county manager, Reed Spalding. Thank you for joining us up here today, any comments?
Make them say something.
All right, okay, you're just so busy, you're just exhausted, right? Nothing, you gave it all already. Well, thank you for being up here in Joy's absence, and now I will turn it over to Supervisor Chukri for any comments.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for accommodating me to phone in today, I appreciate it, and I, the only comment I would have is to congratulate Phoenix on their elections yesterday, and they've elected some new council members and a new mayor, and we wish them well as one of our important partners in Maricopa County.
Excellent, well said, thank you very much. Supervisor Hickman?
Just a quick comment also, concur, it's great to see everything happening over across the street from us, so onward for them. The second thing, I would just like to just give a shout out to McFlood and McDot because of these rains, I mean, I drive past, well, I don't drive past the signs that say "Don't Drive Past," our sheriff is still here, but with all the rains and everything, and all the rural areas that McDot and flood control has to take care of, so thank you guys for keeping us safe and keeping the roads clear, or keep traffic away from those washes, so I appreciate the hard work in this time. I know there's people that spend sleepless nights to make sure we all stay safe, so thanks for all of you to do that.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Supervisor Gallardo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and yes, I'd like to also congratulate the folks from our city of Phoenix, our partners across the street, Kate Gallegos, she ran a tough campaign. I think I'm not the only one that's glad to see the election over, tired of all the campaign ads and all the other stuff.
It's not over.
Exactly, you're right, technically, I'm actually, I'm actually in one of the, in one of the city council districts that will have a runoff, but in terms of Kate Gallegos, I wish her the best and congratulations, you know, I was able to speak with her briefly last night, and I know campaigns are tough and they're hard, but I think she will be a great partner with Maricopa County. She has been an exceptional councilwoman to work with in District Five. I have four of the council districts, and she represented one of them, and she was always one of the first to step up to be able to tackle issues of flood control and disconnected youth issues, and even our homeless situations. She was always one of the first to step up and want to meet and talk and see what we can do to work together, so she's going to be a great mayor, in my opinion, I think she's going to do well, and I wish her the best of luck. On the second note, our Chirine, Justice Court, our constable, for those that may not know, District One and District Five have decided to extend the application deadline until the end of this Friday, I believe, this Friday. It just worked out well. I think you'd be able to give more folks enough time to put together the resumes and submit their letters of interest and so on. I think we had, there's like seven or eight folks that have already applied, and I think we'll get a couple more by the end of the month, or by the end of the week, but it'd be a nice little pool for the whole entire board to look at and select from, so looking forward to seeing who will be the next constable in that Chirine area. So a lot of work ahead in regards to that, but I think we'll get a great slew of candidates.
Great, excellent, well, thanks for those updates. I would echo the comments about the Phoenix election. Congratulations to Kate Gallego, she and I served together as councilpeople for a few years over there, and I would echo the comments that Supervisor Gallardo made, I think she's going to be a great partner for us on those issues of common concern between the county and the city of Phoenix, and look forward to working with her and whoever ends up winning the two runoff elections that they're going to have in District Five and District Eight. I had an opportunity yesterday to go up and speak to the inaugural Anthem area leadership group, so you know, I have like valley leadership and different Hispanic leadership institute, Scottsdale, now Anthem. Anthem is even more so on the map, now they have their own leadership group, and I was just really impressed by the group of folks out there, they had great questions, and I